City Club's corporate and media partners are essential to the vitality and sustainability of club activities. I'd like to thank our generous media partners, including Oregon Business Magazine. I'd also like to extend our deepest appreciation to the Friday Forum's corporate sponsors. Please join me in a warm round of applause for our fall sponsors, the AARP, Portland General Electric, and Perkins Coie. We're grateful for your support. If your company or firm would like to support City Club's mission through sponsorship, please contact the friendly staff in the back of the room or call the City Club office. Join us next week for the Oregon Secretary of State debate between Kate Brown and Newt Bueller. The following week, the last Friday Forum before the election, we'll hear a debate on the tax choices before voters with Kevin Mannix and Steve Novick. And our election wrap-up on November 9th will feature Oregon GOP Chair Alan Alley and Oregon Congressman Earl Blumenauer. You can purchase your tickets and learn more about these events on our website, pdxcityclub.org. And now let me introduce our moderator, Len Bergstein. Len is the founder and president of Northwest Strategies Incorporated and a longtime City Club member and supporter. Through his consulting firm, he has advised companies on a number of the region's most sensitive issues, including environmental regulations, medical care, financial services, Indian gaming, business development, land use, and transportation. He has been involved in Oregon public policy issues and political affairs for over 30 years, working for Oregon Governors Bob Straub and Neil Goldschmidt. He's the political analyst for KGWTV and frequently provides political commentary for various radio stations. And without further ado, please help me welcome Len.
Thank you, Pat. Thanks for the opportunity to be here today. I'm Len Bergstein, and it's my privilege and my pleasure to moderate the Portland City Council debate between Amanda Fritz and Mary Nolan. Briefly, let's review our format. This debate will have four sections. First, each debater will give a three-minute opening statement in the order previously determined by picking names out of a hat. Mary Nolan will open today's debate. Following the opening statements, debaters will respond to questions written in advance of this meeting by City Club's Friday Forum Committee and the City Club staff. These questions were not shared with the debaters. These are the only questions that will be asked today, and there will be no questions from the floor. We'll rely on the judgment of our distinguished accountability panel of City Club members seated in the table in front of me to decide whether or not the debaters have indeed answered each question. If two or more of these members raise their question marks, as they're going to do now -- thanks very much. True dad as they say -- they indicate that they feel that the moderator's questions have not been answered, I'll get to restate the question and ask the debaters to reply again, but the debater will only have 30 seconds to reply the second time. If the debater still fails to answer the questions, the panel can indicate by holding up their cards again, but the debater will not get a third opportunity to respond or move on. On our accountability panel today, we have Edelaki, Debelin Molino, and Jill Odell. Thanks very much for being this. And keeping time at our debate today is Greg Wallinger. So thanks very much for all of you. Back by popular demand is our third section of our debate, our lightning rod -- lightning round, excuse me. A lightning rod too, I'm sure, for both questions and answers. So those will be quick answers, and then at the conclusion of those questions, the debaters will make their two-minute closing statements, and Amanda Fritz will close the debate. We ask, of course, that you please be respectful of the debaters throughout, as I know the City Club audience is always, and please hold all applause until the end of the program. So now it's my pleasure to introduce our debaters and describe some of their impressive accomplishments. First, let me introduce you to Mary Nolan. Mary Nolan represents Portland's District 36 in the Oregon Legislature, where she has served as co-chair of the Ways and Means Committee. Previously, she was the city's Director of Environmental Services. She founded an electronics company in Portland to develop new technology for aviation, and she was elected Chair of the NASA Industry Advisory Council. She was a consumer advocate on the Oregon Construction Contractors Board and chaired the Portland Private Industry Council. Ms. Nolan was the first class -- in the first class of women admitted to Dartmouth College, where she graduated magna cum laude in math. Her volunteer work includes leadership roles at Planned Parenthood, the New Rose Theater, the League of Women Voters, and several local schools. Now let me introduce you to Amanda Fritz. Amanda Fritz was elected to the City Council in 2008. She served as the Commissioner in charge of Neighborhood Involvement, Emergency Communications, Healthy Working Rivers, and the Office of Equity and Human Rights. Prior to election, Ms. Fritz was a registered nurse who worked for 22 years in inpatient psychiatry -- psychiatry, excuse me, at OHSU, and she served on the Portland Planning Commission for seven years. Ms. Fritz graduated from Cambridge University in England with a master's degree in biological services sciences. She spent 17 years volunteering in Portland Public Schools while she raised three children who graduated from Portland's public education system. And now, if I could please invite the debaters to their podiums, they have the stage, I get to go back there and sit with Greg. So please, join us. So as you get settled, we're going to start with opening statements. Ms. Nolan, your opening statement of three minutes.
It's tough to earn a diploma with a task force meeting. I don't know any landlords who accept a plan as rent payment. No one can keep her family secure with a study. Portlanders want and deserve good quality services and actual results that make things better in their lives. They want and deserve leaders who will get important things done. A great city like Portland demands great schools. That's why, as co-chair of Ways and Means, I proposed and passed the largest ever K-12 budget in Oregon's history. I doubled college scholarships, nearly doubled the children attending Head Start. As a Portland Public Schools mom, I volunteered to help pass levies in PPS, as well as Park Rose and David Douglas. It's why school board members, Portland Association of Teachers, David Douglas Education Association President Bob Gray, and Governor Barbara Roberts support me in this race. A vibrant city needs hometown businesses to hire local workers at family wages. That's why I created working capital loan programs for small businesses, passed the state's largest capital construction budget, and started a successful electronics company that paid middle-class wages with good benefits. It's why Oregon Small Business for Responsible Leadership, the Columbia Pacific Building Trades, and Governor Vica Tia support me. A progressive city is welcoming and safe for all its residents. That's why I authored and passed anti-bullying laws, invested in improved training for police and corrections officers, and expanded job training for prisoners to reduce recidivism and prevent crime before it happens. It's why Portland Firefighters Association, Portland Police Association, Oregon Council for Retired Citizens, Planned Parenthood, Basic Rights Oregon Green Light, and Mayor Vera Katz support me. You don't fatten a calf by weighing it. If you agree that studies and plans aren't enough and you want honest-to-goodness results, let me introduce myself. I'm Mary Nolan. I'm known for getting things done. That often means challenging the status quo, and if that's what it takes to improve people's lives, to make our community more just, I'm willing to occasionally ruffle a few feathers. I invite you to judge me by the substantial improvements I've already made in Oregonians' lives and my capacity to deliver even more as a city commissioner.
Thank you. Ms. Fritz, your opening statement of three minutes.
Good afternoon. Thank you, City Club and every Portlander following this race. This is an historic election. For the first time ever, two progressive pro-choice women are competing in November for election to the Portland City Council. I ask voters to reelect Amanda Fritz so I can keep pushing on issues you care about: basic services, including public safety, paved streets and sidewalks, lower water rates, and improved customer service; spending taxpayers' money wisely; collaborating in City Hall with other government partners and with the people of Portland. When I spoke here in the primary, I covered some of my achievements in the first three years of my first term. Today, I will focus on accomplishments since May and my specific plans for Portland for the next four years. Six months ago, there were questions about what the Office of Equity will accomplish. Today, the Office of Equity and Human Rights is already so successful, both mayoral candidates have said it is so important they will keep it in their portfolio. It is focused on making sure everyone has opportunities for city jobs, contracts, and services. The work plan was accepted unanimously with quarterly benchmarks to make sure progress is measurable and achieved. The Office of Equity and Human Rights has flourished because it has two champions on the council and the buy-in of the other commissioners. I will continue to guide the equity work in partnership with the new mayor. We must continue to succeed in this crucial initiative. Since the primary, the Portland Police Union withdrew their grievances regarding the new 911 computer. It is working well and providing frontline providers, management, and elected leaders with accurate information, leading to accountability and better provision of services. Portland has a high rate of suicide. Calls to 911 sometimes result in tragic officer-involved shootings. Last month, I set up a new partnership with Lines for Life, a nonprofit staffed by mental health professionals and highly-trained volunteers. Anyone feeling suicidal or those concerned about someone feeling suicidal, please call That's 503-972-3456 to talk with a counselor. Last month, the United States Department of Justice released findings that the Portland Police Bureau's use of deadly force with people experiencing mental illnesses is unconstitutional. I was a registered nurse working in psychiatry at OHSU for 22 years before winning the election. Because our state's mental health care system is severely underfunded, Portland Police and firefighters are often first responders to people in mental health crisis in the community. Starting in 2010, I worked with a broad range of top leaders to identify root causes and potential solutions to reduce police interactions with people experiencing mental illnesses. So when the Department of Justice demanded changes, I was ready. The final order is due Monday. Then the hard work of implementation to achieve changed outcomes begins. No other Portland elected official has my skills and experience. Please vote to keep this retired mental health nurse on the council.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move to the portion of the program where I'll ask the questions prepared by the Friday Forum Committee and City Club staff. As you both know, I'll ask some questions to both of you, and then you'll each have 60 seconds to answer that. I may direct a question to one of you, and then that person would have the lead answer would be 60 seconds, and the follow-up would be 45 seconds to rebut. And I may also ask each debater a question that the other debater will not have an opportunity to answer. But we, as a City Club, we encourage the debaters to use their time well, not only offering their responses, but rebutting their opponent's statements to make this as interesting and combative as possible. Finally, we'll move to the lightning round, where I will pose a series of questions which candidates must answer yes, no, or waffle. They will hold up cards indicating their responses, and I will read the response out loud for the radio audience, and you will not be given a chance to explain your answer. So we'll begin with questions to both Ms. Nolan and Ms. Fritz. Ms. Fritz, you will answer first. As you consider the possible makeup of the incoming City Council, how does your interpersonal style, skills, and experience make you the most effective choice in this race? 60 seconds for your response.
I've proven that I can get along with a very wide range of people on the current council. Don't get too much more different than Sam Adams, Randy Leonard, Nick Fish, and Dan Saltzman. And I'm endorsed by Nick and Dan, the two members of the council, continuing on the council, as well as by Multnomah County Chair Jeff Cogan and several other local elected leaders. People who work with me like working with me, and I like working with them. As a psychiatric nurse in City Hall, there's challenges to not having a fully stocked medication cupboard, however. I've proven that we have focused during the recession on what's good for Portlanders and getting things done, rather than egos and some of the things that sometimes mar politics. So I am very much looking forward to working with the new council next year.
Ms. Nolan, your response for 60 seconds.
For 30 years in this community, I have built coalitions among people who don't agree with each other on important issues. I've honed those skills in the legislature, working with groups who have diametrically opposed positions and somehow finding common ground. My supporters include groups and individuals who regularly combat, you know, conflict with each other, argue with each other, push hard for different points of view, and yet they both support me. Because they know that I'm the person they can go to and count on me to be honest with them, direct with them, open my mind, listen to them, be available to change my mind when new facts are presented, and help them find common ground. I have good relationships with everyone at City Hall and everyone who might be at City Hall, and I think that skill of bringing people together and sorting out differences is badly needed at City Hall.
Ms. Nolan, your answer first to the next question. In the next four years, what are three things that you can do better in the City Council than your opponents?
Three important things that the city needs are improving our relationships between the Police Bureau and the community. I do think the mayor should remain the police commissioner. But I've co-chaired the Public Safety Committee in the Legislature, and I serve on the Judiciary Committee. And in those roles, I have helped improve training for police officers and corrections officers, very similar to the training that desperately needs improvement here in Portland. I can offer that experience, that success, to the mayor if the mayor wants it. Secondly, I'm the only person either currently serving on the council or running for the council who has ever started a business, ever owned a business, with employees counting on you for your paycheck. I know what it's like to have to meet payroll when there isn't enough money in the bank. And I think it would be critically important to have that perspective sitting in conversations at City Hall when we're talking about imposing new regulations or changing the policies that affect small businesses. You're right, I only got to two.
Right.
Fair enough.
Answer one more, then.
Okay. I have an exceptional background in managing very complex, sometimes controversial, infrastructure agencies, municipal utilities. No one else on the council has that direct experience and a track record of success, designing improvements to clean up the Willamette River, lowering the cost, improving the scheduling of crews, making improvements and, at the same time, increasing the number of women on our workforce and people of color on our workforce.
Ms. Fritz, you get to answer the same question. Three things you can do better on the City Council than your opponent.
The most crucial issue facing us today is public safety, equity, and justice for everyone in Portland. I'm the only person on the council with experience in mental health care, and I'm needed to implement the Department of Justice changes, which are so crucial. Portland Plan Implementation: I was on the Planning Commission for seven years and served as a Neighborhood Land Use Chair for 15. So I understand how the policies set at the council do or don't get implemented in their neighborhoods, and I'm the one who can help make sure that our lofty goals that we've set in the Portland Plan will get implemented through zoning code changes. And Community Engagement: I have a track record from before council, being on the council, and in my four years on City Council, truly engaging the community in complex decisions early, often, and getting to results, because it's actually, you get there faster if we involve our wonderful community in Portland, who have so many experts to get to the right solutions as quickly as possible.
Next question goes to Ms. Fritz. Your answer will be first. It's going to start out with some statistics, but it gets to, hopefully, an important question. Approximately one-third of the council members of Seattle and San Francisco and 80% of Multnomah County Commissioners are women. One out of five members are women on Portland City Council, and that isn't going to change, as you know, this time. Does the issue of representation of women in government matter to you, and how can you be a change agent on this front?
Yes, it matters to me a lot. I'm the seventh woman ever to serve on the Portland City Council in 162 years, and we've had two people of color on the council in 162 years. We had the opportunity to have three women on the council since there was an open seat where Commissioner Leonard is retiring and Eileen Brady made a stirring run for mayor. As it is, I have the experience of having been in City Hall and dealt with the issues there, and starting to get people to think differently. When I first arrived on the council, the foremen on the council were not asking the questions that I ask, having lived my life as a woman, a mother, and a nurse. I've noticed that over time, they are now asking the questions that I want answered before I get to them, and I think that's a good thing. It's not that they didn't want to think of those questions before, they just hadn't been in the habit of thinking of them. So I want to continue that work and broaden it to the Equity Office, and that's what we're going to be doing with our Equity Office trainings, is looking at what do we not know that we don't know, and how can we fix that.
Ms. Nolan, you get to answer this in 60 seconds. The question again was, how can you be a change agent on this front?
I think it's critically important that the people who make decisions for society, whether it's at the city level, the state level, or the national level, look and think like the community that they're representing. I have worked for years to help recruit, mentor, support, fundraise for, and personally donate to the election of many, many women. I chaired an organization called the Women's Investment Network PAC, exclusively dedicated to doing those things, recruiting and supporting women running for office. And because of my work, 30 women got elected to the Legislature. Maybe they'd have been elected without my help, but the support that we provided was critical in getting them started. I don't think we need to give women a bye or judge them by different standards than men. We simply need to give them a chance. And I have dedicated myself, not just to electing myself, but to electing other women and giving them an opportunity to get started as leaders in the community.
Next question. Ms. Nolan, you get to answer first. In the '70s, Portland made national headlines for air pollution and traffic congestion, leading the city to invest in alternative transportation modes. While these investments have decreased smog, other air toxins are a growing concern. After a three-year study, the DEQ was unable to agree on a strategy for reducing these toxins. What new steps can the city take to address concerns about the quality of Portland's air? 60 seconds.
Your question appropriately suggests that transportation is a major source of air pollution, but it's not the only source. I think continued emphasis on a strong, balanced transportation system that relies heavily on transit, pedestrian through local communities, and access to jobs in a walking area or biking, and it also involves an industrial policy to make sure that we're not allowing industrial pollutants to add to the air shed in Portland. And I think as someone with a business background, not only in starting my own business, but in working with large utilities and other businesses, I have a good ability to help negotiate that and build a solution that reduces the toxins caused by both industrial and transportation sources.
Ms. Fritz, you get to answer that question in 60 seconds also.
I attended the Department of Environmental Quality hearings on this issue this past year. Seems to have dragged out quite some time. And they were suggesting that there should be more neighbor-to-neighbor interactions, such as the folks, the great folks in Northwest Portland did with ESCO. Voluntary agreements are not working. We have point source pollutions from industrial users that need to be addressed. And in my second term, I will look at standards in zoning code to better address point sources of pollution, as well as continuing to work on alternative modes of transportation, particularly transit and pedestrian and bike facilities, as we have in my first term.
Great. Now we'll have a slight change in the format. I'm going to direct a question to each of you, and you'll get the 60 seconds first shot at it, and then the second person will get 45 seconds to rebut. So the first question goes to Ms. Fritz. One of Portland's ordinances prohibit anyone from sitting, lying, or keeping possessions beyond his or her immediate reach in the pedestrian use zone of downtown and Rose Quarter Lloyd District sidewalks between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. Is the city's current ordinance working? If not, what change would you pursue? And you have 60 seconds on this question.
This has been something that I've worked on since the first year of my first term, and I'll continue to do so. Our current sidewalks management plan has not been challenged in court and has not been found unconstitutional, which is a major success compared with all the previous iterations. And indeed, what it does is shares public sidewalks so that everybody has a place to sit, lie, and ask for money. Everyone has a place that they can readily progress along the sidewalk, and the businesses have a furnishing, have a frontage zone so that people can get in and out. It's not perfect. Solutions to complicated issues rarely are, but it's working. And we have far fewer complaints now than we did when the previous sit/lie ordinance was in operation. What I do is that I continue to talk about it. Nurses don't just give a medication and then assume that the headache's gone away. We go back and check. So I convene regular meetings of everyone who's interested in this issue to look at how is it working? Are we desperately impacting some communities, and what should we do about it? And I'll continue to do that.
Ms. Nolan, you get 45 seconds to rebut or answer it the way you'd like to.
I don't think it is working. I don't think it provides actual safety or dignity for the people who are sitting or sleeping on the sidewalk, and I don't think it provides a safe atmosphere with comfortable access for people who work in downtown offices. And that's not just my point of view. I hear the issue from very many angles as I listen to voters and residents around the city, as I go out to neighborhood meetings and other events. So how could we change it? I think, first of all, we have to address what it is that causes people to rely on the sidewalks, either as a temporary place to stay or a place to live, and that means we have to get at social services programs. I also think we have to make sure that the law is being enforced so that people are not aggressively panhandling and--
End of your time. Thanks very much.
That's fine.
Even in mid-sentence, it was an answer. Okay? So we move forward. Question, the next question goes to Ms. Nolan, and you'll have the 60 seconds at the first shot. The Portland Tribune reported Multnomah County's median family income is $51,393, which is lower than any other county in the Portland metropolitan area. What council programs or policies could change this? And you have 60 seconds to answer that.
We haven't answered it in years, Len, so 60 seconds isn't exactly fair. But, as I said earlier, I come with some business experience, some business perspective, but it's not just my experience. I've spent the last year visiting with business owners, business executives, all around Portland, and I ask a very similar question. What could the city do? What could city agencies do? What could City Hall do to make it more likely that you could expand your payroll in Portland? They tell me they just want regulatory certainty. They don't want rollbacks on any of the regulations. They just want to know what the rules are. They want quicker turnaround for permitting and licenses and land use decisions. They want great schools. They rarely mention taxes, which is astonishing to me, because the conventional wisdom is that that's what we can do. But I think if we address those three issues first and foremost, I think we'll help them increase their payroll and increase the amount they can pay each of their workers.
Great. Ms. Fritz, you get 45 seconds for rebuttal and response.
We need to recognize that most people who are employed in Portland are employed in small businesses, so we need to continue to support small businesses and allow for their expansion and prosperity. Each of us in this room and each of us at home needs to think about where we spend our money, because the money that goes into local businesses stays in the community. The money that goes into large corporate chains goes elsewhere. So the simple day-to-day things. We also need to recognize that Multnomah County provides, has 40% of the population and provides 80% of the social services. That leaves less for basic services like streets, sidewalks, paving, public safety, and we are working to address that in a regional housing summit that will both look at the previous question and look at this issue of who pays, who benefits, and is that fair?
Ms. Nolan, you get 45 seconds.
No, that was her 45, I think.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
But I'll take it, Len, if you want to give it to me.
I'm going to take back 45 seconds, and now you-- I'm going to take back 45 seconds, and now you, this next question goes to Ms. Fritz. Over the next 30 years, the Portland-Vancouver area will see dramatic growth in the proportion of the population that is aged 65 and older. I think I just had a 65 age moment right there as I lost my place here. What plans or proposals do you have for city policies or programs that will address the unique needs and potential contributions of this aging population? You have 60 seconds.
One of the best parts of our Office of Equity and Human Rights is that it includes the Portland Commission on Disability, and that it also has ties with the Elders in Action Committee, Commission. So we need to look at all of the factors that people with disabilities, which, as I grow older, I expect that I will need more help in some areas. We've, this year, passed a resolution calling for the city of Portland to become a model employer of people with disabilities, and I'm moving forward on that. The broad range of accessibility is important, and we need to move quickly on it, because it's true that we are all becoming older, at least we hope we are. And the Commission on Disability is 30-some different folks with different disabilities, but sharing the same struggle. And they have been so instrumental in setting up the Office of Human Rights and in guiding the council to specific actions that will improve things for everybody.
Ms. Nolan, you have 45 seconds for your rebuttal and response.
What can the city do about this question? First of all, make sure every citizen has accessibility to services. And, not just accessibility, but an ability to get to the services, like parks and public hearings and other services that the city provides. But I'm also really interested in making sure the city makes an extra effort that our senior citizens, and I'm closer than Amanda is to being one of them, have an opportunity to share their wisdom on important policy questions, such as through the city club, but through other venues as well. It's really, really important that senior citizens have access to appropriate, safe, affordable housing. And when I was co-chair of Ways and Means, I secured a million-dollar grant that doubled and provided housing for 3,000 senior citizens.
Forty-five seconds, thanks very much. You get to start off this next one. Question to Ms. Nolan. In August, Mayor Adams announced the Out of the Mud Initiative to improve Portland's substandard residential streets, especially in East County. What more does the council need to do to ensure equal access to paved roads and sidewalks for all Portland residents? In 60 seconds.
The city needs to put some money behind this effort. That's been one of the challenges for 20, 30 years, building out the city of Portland to all of its neighborhoods. The close-in, the traditional neighborhoods, were built out with good infrastructure, good streets, good sidewalks, streetlights. We have not done that for parts of southwest, for parts of north Portland, for some of the close-in southeast Portland areas, and for much of the city east of 205. And we've used the excuse that they have to pay for it themselves, that adjacent property owners should pay for these improvements. That's unrealistic in many of these neighborhoods. We are one city. And while we can ask for a little bit of contribution from the adjacent property owners, I think we also ought to ask for an investment from new development and from the rest of us who benefited from the investments that were made for us 50, 100 years ago.
Ms. Fritz, you have a rebuttal and response, limited to 45 seconds.
We do need to make sure that new development pays its way, and I revise the system to make sure that that happens, particularly on 122nd, which was one of the biggest areas where I intervened, even though I don't have the Bureau of Transportation. I support the Out of the Mud Initiative. It's going to allow property owners to pave their street with a substandard street, but it'll cost $60 per linear foot instead of $300 per linear foot. We also need to look at where are the unpaved streets, where are the streets without sidewalks, and prioritize them. Something that I asked Mayor Adams to have the Bureau of Transportation look into, we have a list now. Charlie Hales has said that he will prioritize funding three miles per year, and I will support that.
Question for, for Ms. Fritz. The 2010 census data shows that over 70% of Portland's population identifies as white, making Portland one of the least ethnically diverse metropolitan areas in the country. However, between 2000 and 2010, Portland saw a nearly 40% increase in Hispanic, Pacific Islander, Asian, and other minority populations. How do we ensure that all citizens are involved in local decision-making processes and feel they have a stake in the outcomes? You have 60 seconds.
I will continue to support the work of the New Portlanders Program in the Office of Equity and Human Rights. And as an immigrant, I understand some of the challenges of people coming to this country and not some of the others, since English or American is somewhat my first language, and I look like I do. We have over 80 different communities in Portland from other countries, and it's a wonderful, we need to celebrate the richness, and we need to make sure that there's accessibility. I established a process that citizens have input into our federal and state lobbying agendas, and this year, we had translation into Somali, Spanish, and American Sign Language at that event. And come to know that folks from those different backgrounds care about the same things that most other Portlanders care about. So that was just a way, one way of making sure that everybody has input, everyone has access. And I will continue to celebrate that and to work to achieve so that everyone has opportunities for jobs, contracts, and services in Portland.
Ms. Nolan, your rebuttal in response to 45 seconds.
I think the most important part of your statistics, Len, is not just the 70% currently, but the rate of change. Today, 70% of our population is white. In 20 years, more than half of the students in public schools in Portland will be children of color. We need to be prepared to make sure we are providing those children, all children, with equal access to good education. My daughter's Latina, and so I have a particular perspective on this and a passion for making improvements like going out to communities, not expecting people to come to City Hall, not expecting them to come to our turf, but we should go to their place of comfort, listen to them on their home turf, so that we really get genuine input on decisions that we're making that affect their lives.
The next question is yours, Ms. Nolan.
Thanks.
The issue of fluoridation. So the issue of fluoridating Portland's water will be on the ballot in the next two years. What role will you play in community education and leading the discussion on this controversial topic? 60 seconds.
I've spent a lot of time studying this issue in the legislature, because the issue of, the benefits of fluoride has come up in bills before the legislature. So I had a head start before the proposal was introduced in August. I also think that the city made a very poor process in how it presented the proposal, how it conducted its hearing. I do agree with the conclusion. My evidence, the information I've heard, balancing all the different perspectives, is that the public health benefits and the existing dental health crisis for children in Portland, particularly children of color and children in low-income families, convinces me that that's an appropriate thing and a necessary thing for us to pursue. But your question is to how you proceed with that, and I do think we need a very genuine, authentic conversation in the community about how this affects people's lives before we proceed.
You get 30 seconds to answer that question. I guess the, I think what the group wants you to focus on is the role that you will play in community education and leading the discussion.
Okay, fair enough. What I, what, I've listened to different people on the pro side, on the anti side. What I would do is make sure that the city council conducts really genuine hearings, take us out around the community, give authentic opportunity, not just limited to three minutes, as was done in the City Hall hearing, but present factual information, competing perspectives on that, and give the public lots of information about this.
Okay, you got that. So, Ms. Fritz, you get 45 seconds for rebuttal and response.
This is a great example of what happens when I'm not in City Hall. I was on the plane going to my niece's wedding in England on August 9th, when this story broke. And by the time I returned on August 21st, three members of the council had announced their support for fluoridation, and the entire city was up in arms about it. I received over 3,000 emails on this issue. I did come, I listened, and I heard all of the testimony. Representative Nolan announced on August 20th that she was in support of fluoridation. I waited until after the six-and-a-half-hour public hearing, which was a very, one of the best hearings I've ever been at, because people after six and a half hours were still giving one minute of testimony, with three of the council having already announced their intent, believing that their opinion would make a difference. Give me the, I haven't answered, I haven't answered the question. I need, I need another third. What? Oh, dang it. Forgot that. I thought I was going to get another 30 seconds, because what I've already done is talked with both proponents and opponents about having discussions.
But you can't take it, you're not getting it, you can't take it. Okay, thank you, thank you very much for both of you for staying with us. Greg, how are we doing on time?
We're okay.
Okay, so I, we're now ready to move to the lightning round. Exciting for all of you, and something we look forward to here.
Yeah, I'm sure you do. I'm not sure we do.
Okay, so as you get your cards that you've got in your podiums, now we'll move to lightning round. Both of you will be asked the same question, and your only response will be yes, no, or waffle, as your card indicates. You each have cards indicating your response, and you'll need to answer as soon as I'm done answering, asking the question. I'll read your response out loud, so that a radio audience can know what you've done, and you will not have an opportunity to expand on your answer in any way, body language or whatever, no sneaking in these kind of discussions.
Because that helps educate the public.
There's a number of ballot measure referrals and initiatives on the November ballot. Have you decided how to vote on them? Measure 79, which would ban a real estate transfer tax. Ms. Fritz, no. Nolan, no. Measure 84, which phases out estate and inheritance taxes. Nolan, no. Fritz, no. Measure 85, which allocates the corporate income tax kicker refund to additional fund K-12 education. Fritz, yes. Nolan, yes. Measure 26, 143, which creates a Multnomah County Library taxing district. Fritz, yes. Nolan, yes. Measure 26, 144, the Portland Public School District Bond Measure. Nolan, yes. Fritz, yes.
We're getting there.
Yeah. Measure 26, 145, which reforms Portland City's fire, police, disability, and retirement system.
Not yet.
Fritz, yes. Nolan, yes. Measure 26, 146, the Portland Arts Tax. Fritz, yes. Nolan, no. Now we'll ask some questions, we're still in the lightning round, but these questions aren't on the ballot this year. Should we cover the city's open water reservoirs to protect drinking water quality? Fritz, no. Nolan, no. Do we have enough bike lanes?
I wasn't going to use this one.
Quick, 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 quick. Fritz, no. Nolan, no. Okay? Slow no, but a no. Okay? Do you agree with the reinstatement of fired Portland Police Bureau Officer Ronald Frashauer?
Could you repeat that?
Do you agree with the reinstatement of fired Portland Police Bureau Officer Ronald Frashauer? Fritz, no.
The reinstatement.
Reinstatement. Nolan, no.
Really?
Okay, this is...
Yeah.
There's a, there's a query there.
The other question is about the appeal.
Okay? Easy there, you two, now come on. This is the last question for the lightning round. To your knowledge, have you ever appeared in one of Governor Romney's binders of women?
Hell, no!
Fritz, no. Thank you very much for that. So let's get a time check. Where are we, Greg? Still got good time? Okay, so we have time for some more questions with answers. I'll direct these to one debater, and they'll get 60 seconds, and then we'll do the 45-second rebuttal. Okay? First question to Ms. Fritz. City Council recently voted to pass a resolution opposing coal being transported through the city until further research can prove, approve its safety. Opponents of the resolution say that coal exports would be a huge economic benefit to the city and the region. Is there middle ground on this issue that the city council can pursue? You have 60 seconds to frame your answer.
I was the author of the resolution opposing coal trains coming through Portland and calling for a comprehensive environmental impact statement from the Army Corps of Engineers. I think that's the right approach. It doesn't make sense to me, as a retired nurse, as a mom, to do something that is not only dangerous to people around the tracks here, but to then ship coal to other countries that would be burned and the toxics will come back here. We have the most aggressive climate action plan in the region adopted by council in 2009. We need to make sure that we're addressing both global and local impacts. At the hearing on the anti-coal, anti-coal train resolution, which by the way, Melina Malone, who worked on it for my staff, is right here, and I thank her again for her, all of her good work. I have great staff. At the hearing, the proponents said that jobs are more important than anything, and my response was, no, public health is more important than anything, and I will continue to advocate for that. What was the question again?
I think the question is, is there middle ground...
No.
...on this issue?
Sorry. Thank you.
Ms. Nolan, you get 45-second rebuttal.
Yes, there's middle ground. I don't think we have to compete between jobs and public health. Public health is paramount, and I think it's responsible for the city to defend the public health of the citizens and residents living in the city. But this is also about global warming, and I think the city can have a much bigger impact on global warming by investing in energy conservation efforts in the city of Portland. Let's remember that if you live in PP&amp;L's service territory, 60% of your electricity is generated by burning coal. In Portland General Electric's territory, it's 30%. We should do everything we can to improve, to reduce our consumption of coal before we lecture other countries about their consumption of coal.
Next question. This goes to Ms. Nolan. There is talk of adding parking meters to neighborhoods that have never had them, and residents in Portland neighborhoods are concerned about building residential units without onsite parking. Given the tension between developers and residents, how do you think the city's planning process is working these days? You have 60 seconds.
There are tensions, and I think there are conflicts not just between developers and homeowners, but between different goals that the city has set, and that is what creates the tension between developers and homeowners. We want to have affordable housing. We want to contain urban sprawl. We want to have lower energy use for transportation for people commuting to work or school or leisure activities. Those conflict with preserving the integrity of established, stable homeowner neighborhoods in Portland. And therein is where the tension between developers and homeowners come from. And what we can do about it is really revisit those objectives and go through the city code to make sure that we eliminate, or at least reconcile, the conflicts in the city code, but do it by bringing in advocates for affordable housing, advocates for neighborhoods, advocates for energy, energy conservation.
Ms. Fritz, you get to have 45 seconds in your response.
The planning process is working, because people are engaging, over 18,000 people engaged in formulating the Portland Plan. And that's how we'll get to decisions on issues like parking meters and apartments with no parking. On this issue, there definitely is room for compromise and middle ground. And I called for a hearing at the Planning Commission, it'll be on November 13th, to go back and take a quick look right now at whether apartments should be built, 80-plus units with no parking whatsoever, which is not only a problem for people with disabilities who need to have their car close to their home, but it's also a problem for people who are visiting them and for neighborhoods where the restaurants and businesses rely on having on-street parking, which the apartments will be gobbling up. So that's an example of where I figured out that was a problem quickly and moved to a solution.
Okay, we have time for a couple of more questions, and we're going to kind of shift back, just to see your flexibility, back to the 60 seconds of each of you answering questions. So Ms. Fritz, you get to answer first this question. The streetcar contributed to improving the Pearl District and now crosses the Broadway Bridge at a cost of $148 million. The Oregonian recently referred to the east-side expansion as a "streetcar without desire", casting doubt on its value. How do you believe citizens should view Portland's investment in the streetcar, especially in light of the reductions being made in bus service by Triment? You have 60 seconds.
First of all, I've been... First of all, I've been very grateful that we've had the streetcar project in construction for these past four years because it's provided well-paying jobs during the recession. And having not been a big fan of streetcar prior to that, that's one, you're not, your timer's not working.
Your timer's running. Yeah, thank you.
I should pause for 15 seconds, but I won't. I, the streetcar is not really transportation, it's a development tool, and that's why it's been so successful in the Pearl District, is because by having fixed rail there, businesses are willing to invest adjacent to it, and it's certainly the right thing to give the East Side its streetcar. And I am very confident that as we look at zoning changes that are needing to happen there and other strategic investments that can help leverage the investment we've already made in the streetcar, that that was the right thing to do. Having said that, TriMet really needs to focus on bus service.
Ms. Nolan, you get 60 seconds on this question also.
I'm sorry.
Do you want me to repeat?
Please.
Sure. Let's see, so we set up the question by saying the streetcar has contributed to improving the Pearl District, now crosses the Broadway Bridge. The Oregonian said it was a "streetcar without desire", casting doubt on its value. How do you believe citizens should view Portland's investment in the streetcar, especially in light of the reductions that are being made in bus service by TriMet? And you have 60 seconds.
I do look at the streetcar as both an asset for improving neighborhoods but also for improving transit. Streetcar systems are very efficient ways of moving people around, particularly an urban community like Portland is. They are permanent investments, much cheaper than adding lane miles of asphalt, acquiring right-of-way to expand the system, and the cars that run on them are much more efficient and longer-lived than buses. So there's a real benefit over the long term for streetcar systems in the appropriate kinds of applications. Pearl area, Pearl District is certainly one of them. The close-in East Side is perfect for this installation, and I think that Portland voters, Portland taxpayers should see this as a strong investment in close-in neighborhoods, better transit, and more energy efficiency.
Well, you both have done a great job getting us to the point of closing statements, so we're going to move now to the final portion of the program. Two-minute closing statements from each of you, and as we said earlier, Mary Nolan will have the first closing statement, and then we will have Amanda Fritz. So, Mary Nolan, you're, you get the first two-minute close.
Thanks. There is a key difference in this race. My opponent says with the second term, voters can see four more years of the same. So ask yourself, has she delivered the results we need most? She oversaw what was supposed to be an upgrade of the 911 system, but when emergency responders are sent to wrong addresses and still today can't find information that used to be readily available, has public safety improved? Have we spent taxpayers' money wisely? She's a psychiatric nurse. Are city police today better trained or better equipped to respond effectively to people in mental health crisis than four years ago? And if not, why not? Urgent needs can't wait for consensus. In 2009, when Big Tobacco came into Oregon with a $13 million campaign and convinced voters to reject a measure to provide health care for poor children, I could have said, "Sorry, the voters have spoken, and those kids don't get health care." But I knew that wasn't right or fair. Instead, I used my influence as majority leader to bring together people who are traditional antagonists, and I negotiated a new deal among hospitals, insurance companies, advocates for children. Today, the result is that 80,000 kids in Oregon, 12,000 of them here in Portland, can see a doctor or a dentist when they need to. That's Portland values put to action. Values that I've successfully advocated for in the legislature and as a leader in our community, and now I'm ready to take it to City Hall. I am passionate about this place we call Portland and the people who call it home. If you want someone who will bring broad progressive values to City Hall and who knows how to deliver tangible results on the big stuff, I ask for your vote now and your advice and help next year in getting important things done.
You have a close, Amanda Fritz.
This week, Wellamet Week announced that they switched their endorsement since the primary, giving me their support. Nurses are not known for bragging about how great we are, and that aspect of being a politician is still challenging for me, so I will read from the endorsement. Fritz has also proven to be a true citizens' representative on a council buffeted by conflicting agendas. She remains an important, independent voice, unafraid to challenge the status quo. Her penny-pinching appears more admirable as Portland's budget gets closer to being swallowed by urban renewal areas and fire and police pensions. She's taken a firm stand alongside Adams to draw the line on the police bureau and joined Commissioner Dan Saltzman in scrutinizing the fire bureau. I was hoping for a positive campaign with focus on specific plans for Portland. I believe Portlanders deserve better than the mudslinging and innuendo that is damaging public confidence in government at the state and national levels. And you deserve specific plans as well as general value statements. Please visit amanda2012.com to read many specifics on what I've accomplished and what I will do for Portlanders. In my second term, I will establish a 3-1-1 system to provide better customer service for Portlanders. This month, council voted unanimously to move forward with this project under my leadership. I will reduce water rate increases. I will continue to seek release from the state and federal governments to delay expensive projects until after the Environmental Protection Agency revises its rules. I will press the legislature to provide adequate school funding, a growing problem that state legislatures have failed to solve over the past 10-plus years. I will keep using common sense and exercising fiscal responsibility. I've limited campaign contributions with no money accepted from corporations or political action committees. Portlanders can continue to trust the commissioner you elected in 2008 with public campaign financing. I remember every day that I work for you, the taxpayers, ratepayers, and voters of Portland. I'm endorsed by the Portland Association of Teachers and many other great organizations and people, and I ask for your vote for a second term.
Well, that wraps up our forum for today. Thank you very much. As our president, Pat McCormick, returns to the stage, let's give today's debaters a big round of applause.
I want to thank our, I want to thank our accountability panel, members Jill Odell, Deblin Melino, and Adalaki. Thank you to our timekeeper, Greg Wallinger, and a special thank you to our moderator, Lynn Bergstein, and of course, our greatest appreciation to our debaters, Amanda Fritz and Mary Nolan. Please join us again next week to hear the Oregon Secretary of State debate between Kate Brown and Newt Buehler. We are adjourned.